Board of Appeals meeting, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this is our June 13th meeting of the zoning board of appeals, Woodbury. We meet the second Wednesday of every month. I'll introduce our board members. To your far right, we have Mr. Joseph DiVannudo. And Mr. Gary Kestenbaum, Mr. Kevin Abrams, Mr. Andrew Jacomaza, myself, Karen Ungr, our attorney, Mr. Michael Donnelly, and our recording secretary, Jessica McLennan.
I remember this time.
Yeah. I'm getting better. Our next meeting will be in July, July 11th, which is the second Wednesday of July. We have some changes to the agenda. Where it says, "Action on decisions." Woodview Heights, which is letter D, is going to be moved to number seven, which is deliberations on closed public hearings, because that public hearing is closed. Also, for public hearings this evening, the Shops of Woodbury, LLC, will be held in August. That is at the applicant's request. And Bakertown Road condominiums will be in July, at the applicant's request. Everything else will remain the same. We don't need an executive session. Has everyone read the minutes from the previous, from last month?
Yes.
Any discussion on them? Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes have been accepted. No new business. Action on decisions. First one is sofer. Decision for an area variance to permit the installation of a six-foot-high, solid, chain-link fence in a front and side yard, where as pursuant to section 146-5A and B and 146-7A, the maximum height permitted in a front and side yard is four-foot high and 50% solid. Property is located at 14 Pheasant Run, Highland Mills, block and lot 247-25. After several pages of facts and findings, the decision is, "In employing the balancing tests set forth in Village Law, Section 7-712-B-C, the board hereby denies the variance is requested." We're going to take a vote on this now. Joe, how do you vote on this?
I vote aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the variance has been denied. Second action is for Jeremiah's. Decision for an area variance to permit the installation of a six-foot-high, solid, stockade fence in a front and side yard, where as pursuant to section 146-5A and B and 146-7A, the maximum height permitted in a front and side yard is four-foot high and 50% solid. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at 42 Country Hollow in Highland Mills, is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 247, block 5, lot 18. The decision is, after several pages of facts and findings, "In employing the balancing tests set forth in Village Law, Section 7-712-B-C, the board hereby denies the variance is requested." How do we vote? Joe?
I vote aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So this decision, this variance has also been denied. The third action on decision is Central Valley Property Management. Decision for an area variance to permit a proposed mixed-use building on a property having a lot area of 68,346 square feet, where as pursuant to section 310-6F and 310-7, bulk regulations, the combination of all proposed uses, will require a lot area of 78,000 square foot of lot area. Said property is located in the HB zoning district at 252 to 260 State Route 32 in Central Valley, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 230, block 7, lots 17, 18, and 19. We have a, an issue with this. For one moment, Mr. Donnelly will explain.
The zoning board has rules of its own, which are amendable. One of the rules is that an approval is only good for a period of 90 days, and that 90-day period is the time within which you must get a building permit. It can be extended at the discretion of the zoning board. I've made a recommendation that that, the board consider amending that, to make that a longer time period that's more realistic. But until that amendment occurs, that condition is attached to any resolution granting a variance. So if a variance is granted this evening, please mark your calendars, come back to see us. Hopefully by then, the rule will be changed, and it'll be extended for a longer period. But we can discuss perhaps toward the end of the meeting, how and for how long you want to change that durational period.
But we could change it for this one alone, if we wanted to, for now.
I think you have a rule, you should follow your rule until you change it.
Because I just don't want to see taxpayers paying to redo this every 90 days.
Well, you can extend it. They would simply come back and ask for an extension by letter, and you'd vote on it as an administrative matter.
That's it?
Yeah, but it, but it's not a great practice to have to do that all the time, because 90 days is a very short time period. But yes, it would take no more than a vote to extend, based upon a letter request.
Mike, that would be another extension for another 90 days?
Yeah, it does, and it seems to mean that you can only grant a total of 180. And I think that's also not advisable, because there are times, if a complicated project has to go to the planning board, and maybe to the DEC and the Health Department, that realistically, they won't be able to get all those other permits within six months. And the way it reads right now, you'd have to start over here, and I don't think that's wise. So I think you should change it to either 180 days, extendable, at the discretion of the board without limit, or make it something even longer, a year.
Especially if they have to deal with the planning board after they leave here.
Sure.
Well, that's the problem here.
And you're always going to be the first agency granting the approval, because the others can't act until the variance is obtained. So you don't have to do it now, I think you should think over what you want. Also, the way the section reads, the limit only applies to area variances, and there's no limit on the duration of a use variance. If there's going to be a duration of limit, I think it should be the same for both. And I recommend either 180 days or a year.
Mike, is that something that's particular to the way we do it? That, that's one of our rules?
It's your own rule, yes. It's not a state law, it's not part of the code enacted by the village board. It's in your rules that you can change by vote. I think you should have the new rule before you, and when you tell me what you wanted to say, I'll give you the text of it, then vote upon it, and that will be your rule from that point forward.
Well, maybe we should discuss a little further later.
Yeah.
But for now, we'll just leave it the way it is, for this.
Right, right.
I think you have to.
Because of, that way we don't amend the law. We think about it a little. All right, so the decision for Central Valley Properties, after several pages of facts and findings, decision, "In employing the balancing tests set forth in Village Law, Section 7-712-B-C, the board hereby grants the variances as requested upon the following conditions. One, this approval is not granted in a vacuum, but is rather one of two independent yet interconnected discretionary approvals, the other being within the jurisdiction of the Village of Woodbury Planning Board. As such, this grant of variance is conditioned upon approval of the proposed building by the planning board. This approval by the zoning board is intended to do no more than vary the specified strict limitation provisions of the code. It is not intended to authorize construction of a particular building, nor approve the footprint, size, volume, or style thereof. The planning board remains possessed of all of its power and authority to review, limit, and request modifications to, and to ultimately approve, absolutely or conditionally, any application in reference to this project as may come before it. Should the planning board require changes in the size, location, or configuration from what is shown on the plans before the zoning board, that requires greater or different variances, the applicant must return to the zoning board for further review and approval." Number two, this application is not decided in a vacuum, but is rather, as noted above, tied to a specific application for approval of a permit pending before the planning board and the Orange County Department of Public Works. Therefore, this approval is conditioned upon the applicant diligently pursuing his application before those agencies. This grant of variance, unless extended, shall expire if a building permit for the proposed building is not obtained by the applicant within 90 days from the date of the decision. Okay, we'll take a vote. Joe, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
I vote nay. So the variances have been granted. Okay, public hearing. This will be the Torres public hearing for an area variance to permit a six-foot-high, solid, stockade fence, which is existing, in a side yard, where as pursuant to section 146-5A, B, and 146-7A, the maximum height permitted in a side yard is four-foot high and 50% solid. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 73 Dunderburg Road in Central Valley, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 228, block 10, lot 16. The applicant is not present tonight.
I'm present for.
Right, I was just going to say that.
Okay. I have a durable power of attorney, and I'm here to speak for him.
Okay. Mr. Mark Gordon, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Could you approach the podium, please? In looking at this, it's possible that, that this application may need to be renoticed. We need to, to discuss this before. The original variance was for the side, the right side of the house, is that the south side? The six-foot fence.
Yes.
However, the Morgan Court side needs to be 40 feet from the right-of-way of Morgan Court, and it's less than 30 feet. So we, I don't know what we want to do with this. Should we renotice, or should we, and have him reappear, or what, what should we do?
I think the applicant should amend his application. But your question is whether you need to renotice the hearing. The issue is, is the public hearing notice that was published adequate to inform the people in the neighborhood of just what was being applied for?
And I'd like to speak on that, if you're going to, Donnelly. So, as you guys, as you all know, my name's Mark Gordon, I have a business here on 30, oh, sorry. I have a business on Route 32, I'm an attorney. I live on Morgan Court. I know the Torreses. I have spoken to people who live in our, in our neighborhood, Morgan Court. First of all, they've done a very nice job with the way they have built up and maintained that home on that road. I've spoken to people that reside in Morgan Court, and there is absolutely no objection by any of the residents that I've spoken to about some of the things that Henry has requested. I know that he did give a package to the board with detailed, pretty, pretty good graphic color photographs demonstrating the location, and why exactly he's requesting this variance for the, for the fence and the height. All of which I think the board has, I don't know if you need me to go into that.
No, we do.
I'm sorry?
We, we have the.
Okay.
Yes, we have that information.
So I just wanted to let the board know that, that not only do I live in that, on that, I'm at Fort Morgan Court, but I have spoken to members of that area, that whole block. And there is no objection that I've known from anybody that lives on that block. I don't know if, if the board members need me to expand on that, or as far as Henry, he's away on business, which, I'm not his attorney, by the way. I'm a resident, and I'm friends with them, and he asked me to appear with a durable power of attorney, because he was out of town on business. So that's why I wanted to come in and voice my support for it as well.
Has he filled you in on why he did this? His, his original application for the permit was for the four-foot fence, and it states very clearly, maximum height 48 inches.
Right.
It also does not extend on one side, past the rear of the house, yet he went and built a six, and that was a four-foot semi-solid fence, and he went and built a six-foot solid fence, and then extended it.
Right.
Do you know why?
Well, I, I'm not going to speculate, as far as that goes. But what I can tell you, from the package that I see, that he gave me to review prior for me coming, I know one of the main reasons, I think, you're concerned with the area on Morgan Court. If you look at the submission package, one of the big issues that he has, that he's trying to address, is the school bus that stops right at the top of Morgan Court. If you look at the photographs.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. If you look at the photographs that were given as part of the package, if you look from his backyard, you can see the school bus passing the Morgan Court location. So he's concerned, not only with children maybe jumping the fence, a safety issue with respect to the pool that was put in as well, which I think he did mention in the submission to the board as well. And also the, I think it's, has to do also with the pool equipment that he has on the side of the road also, as far as hiding it from the public view, which I think he's done, and it's not an eyesore at all, if you look at the photographs.
But that's not where the problem is. He's allowed to have a six-foot fence in the back, isn't he?
No, I think, I thought it's four feet.
No, the back, the rear of the property.
The rear yard.
The rear can have the six-foot. He's on a corner, and that, that side yard's considered as a front yard, so it's four-foot.
The rear of the property is not where his problems are.
It's on the right side of the house, from Dunderburg.
Right.
But why did he come up the side of the house, when the plans specifically have it at the rear of the house?
If he wants a variance for that, he's going to need to amend his application to show that.
Okay, I mean, that's what I think what you had said at, at the beginning.
And we've got to deal with the, the four feet, the 40 feet.
Sure.
Okay.
So we really should just amend everything, and get them in here to answer these questions.
I think it's the better course. I will tell you, Mark, that Jay's here, and Jay has brought a proceeding against another zoning board I represent, where inadvertently, we left out mention of one of the variances in the notice, and the board felt, as I said to you now, because there are cases that support that position, that as long as the notice as a whole would notify someone in the neighborhood of the nature of what was proposed, that's adequate. And the trial court agreed with my position, but that case is now on appeal. So if you want to avoid that risk, I recommend that we amend the application to include what is in the field, if that's what you want to keep, as well as requesting a variance for the 40-foot side yard setback.
I just want to write this.
And that we renotice it.
He should probably speak to Mr. Thomas Berger.
Okay.
I love this post.
Well, I'll, I'll let Henry know to speak to Gary, yeah. I've, I've obviously dealt with him on other issues, but I'll speak to, I'll tell him to speak to Gary about that. So the board wants him to do an amendment, then, to?
Two things. One is to request a variance for not satisfying the 40-foot setback.
40-foot setback is what you're concerned about?
And number two, this fence has already been built.
Right.
What he shows on the plans is not what's been built in the field, and if he wants to keep that, he's going to have to amend his plans to show that fence, so that the board can consider it. Otherwise, even if he got the variance here tonight, he'd still have to take down a big section of the fence, because he didn't request a variance for it.
Okay. All right.
All righty.
All right, does the board have any other questions, or you all have this?
Not, not at this time, we don't know.
All right, so I'll let them know. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this, since this was part of, this is a public hearing? So do we?
Are we continuing, or closing?
That's what I was.
I would say close it, because we're going to renotice it.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the public hearing for Torres is, is closed at this time, until he amends his application and resubmits.
Okay. Woodbury Heights.
Woodview Heights.
Woodview Heights, oh, well.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right.
Take care now.
We did not receive a building inspector's report, so we don't need to discuss that. Deliberations on closed public hearings, the only closed public hearing we're dealing with this evening is Woodview Heights. This is a discussion of the area variances, this is concerning the slopes and the wetlands. So, this was a piece of property that was originally approved in 1995, preliminary approval for 15 lots. There were some issues, it was extended about 30 times, every six months. The property is hilly terrain, numerous wetlands, the applicant bought, this piece of, this current applicant bought the property in 2016. The zoning for the slopes and the wetlands had already changed. The applicant amended his decision, his decision, his application, brought it down to 13 lots, six of which need variances. The applicant said numerous times that the road, the loop road can't be changed. I went through some planning board minutes, certainly not 26 years' worth, but I went through a few, but I couldn't find any record. I spoke to the planning board chairman, who does not recall any constraints on this road, so I don't really know what the story on the road is.
I think the way the property is pitched, I think that's why their, that road is.
Right, but there's, you know, he's saying that the planning board said that they couldn't change the road at all, but the planning board chairman was telling me that she didn't think that they said that. So I don't know. You know, that's basically hearsay. I have no written anything on any of that.
Nothing in the minutes?
I couldn't find it. I mean, it's, it may be there, but, you know, I didn't look at every single.
I think we should go to the questions.
All right, you want to do that? Let me get mine.
Of course, I can't find mine, but you'll read them. I looked all over, so.
We did, we are on receipt of a memorandum of law, did everybody get that, as guidance in making the decision? Let me find my five questions. I'm trying to find the ones with the applicants.
I looked all over, I can't find mine either.
I have the old one, but.
When the revision was April 25th.
Is that all your answers are in that paper that you sent today, or no?
Oh, wait a minute, here it is.
Yeah, didn't you send us something today?
No, 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 no.
I just got it today.
All right, I have the April 25th one, that's the one I have. Yeah.
Nah, she'll read them.
All right. All right, let's discuss these questions. The variance will not produce an under, okay, will the variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties? The applicant says no. The subject parcel will be developed as a residential subdivision, which is permitted in the R1A zoning district. The slopes on the property will not create any unusual or undesirable feature or condition that would be a detriment to nearby properties. As previously noted, the surrounding area is substantially developed, with more than 100 lots that are less than one-half the size of the applicant's lots. There's no evidence from which to conclude that an undesirable change will be had to the neighborhood. Comments?
Do we have any idea the sizes of the houses, though? I know this is kind of a planning board thing, but, you know, you can put a 4,000-square-foot house on a one-acre lot, and that would not go with the character of the neighborhood.
True. I don't know. It shows, I mean, I don't know if these.
I mean, they got that 300-foot rule, sort of, but, I don't know.
300-foot rule?
Yeah, the house is similar within 300 feet, or something like that.
I don't know that the houses on this diagram are to scale. I'm reading the old traffic maps. I mean, on, on the, on the diagram, they look small. I don't know. Would it matter to you? Would it matter how big the houses are?
Well, the character of the neighborhood is kind of based on the houses, sort of agreeing, right?
I would think. The ones on Hill Avenue are rather small. And then on the one side, you have Highland Lake Estates.
I can't hear you.
I'm, really? I'm right in there now, how's that?
Get your hearing aid out.
I thought I was, I thought I was talking into it. There's varying sizes of houses in that area, I know. I think it can't be turned, that's the problem. Well, do you think an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood would be had? I'm looking through the, the memorandum of law. The applicant says, "The applicant has shown substantial proof as to the existing conditions. The tax maps submitted show that all the surrounding neighborhoods are residential. At least 90% of the existing lots are less than one-half the lot size of the lots proposed by the applicant." That's a variation right there. So, you know, maybe the size of the house is a concern, I don't know. The proposed road system is a loop and not a cul-de-sac. Essentially, there's no evidence on the record that this development will out, will be out of character with the surrounding neighborhoods.
Well, I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to change the character whether there's five lots or six lots on the inner circle. See, that, that's the problem that I have.
The amount of lots on the inner circle, on the inner loop?
Yeah, I mean, they, they lowered the outside lots by one in order to meet the codes. Why can't they lower the lots on the inside by one, to meet the inside codes?
Well, I know that there's a financial.
Well, I'm not here for, to give out financial on projects. That's my problem.
So you're, what you're saying is that if they, the amount of lots now might produce an undesirable change, but if they changed, if they reduced.
I didn't say that.
Okay, oh, so what you're saying, if they reduced the inner loop by one?
I think you're raising that under the self-created hardship nature argument, rather than under the undesirable change.
Okay, I'll wait for hardship.
That's how I'm hearing it, anyway.
Is there anyone that thinks that granting the variance would produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties? Anyone? No? So.
The area character, if the houses agree, it's all in the houses, you know what I mean? That's, that's the only point I want to make about it. All right? It all depends on what goes in there, no matter how many lots end up being there.
True, true.
Well, that, that results from what's allowed under zoning, not from the variance. If it's, if it doesn't matter how many lots, you're concerned is whether or not to build big homes. That may be a, a defect in the zoning chapter that allows that to happen, and, but that, that's not a result of the variance. This, this factor is whether, as a result of the variance, it will change the character of the neighborhood.
To the land, okay.
So we're saying, no, it will not produce an undesirable change, or a detriment to nearby properties? If we're following.
If you're following that, that thing, then, no, it's not.
Okay. Everyone in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Could the benefit be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance? The applicant says there is no other method by which the applicant could obtain the requested 13 lot count, without the granting of the requested variance.
That's where, that's part of where my whole thing comes in. They can, they can achieve their goal without requiring any variance, by reducing the number of lots on the inner part, on the inner circle.
Which would not, which would then be in compliance, those inner lots?
I think they would be in compliance, and then they wouldn't need a variance, because you're going to take one lot, and you're going to take that land, and you're going to divide it up amongst the other five. And then I think those five are going to meet the criteria, just like they did on the outside.
Kevin, no, it takes two, right? Huh? It takes two, doesn't it, Kevin? Because it goes, 11 is seemingly what they're allowed, 13 is what they're asking for. I think it would take two lots to clear up the inner loop.
Well, I think this is all. Well, I think this is old, I think they're down to twelve already.
No, thirteen.
They're thirteen.
They're down to thirteen.
Well, I don't know what it would take, but they can achieve their goal without a variance, just by reducing the number of lots.
It depends upon what the definition of goal is. Their, their goal, their business goal cannot be achieved by reduction. But the goal of developing a development is achievable by reduction, as Kevin said.
And I don't think it's the zoning board is, is-
In the business.
In the business to worry about whether a builder can make money on a project.
I think also, this, this whole thing with the road and the lot count, this was, received preliminary approval in 1995, and I don't know-
And unfortunately, things have changed.
It was never changed until the zoning changed, and, right, and now they're back to the 1995 preliminary approval plan. They never adjusted the development to the new zoning.
Correct.
And I don't know if they had done that, if, if they could have done something, but, and I'm thinking now that that road may have been approved back in 1995, maybe now it's, it's not something-
It might not even meet specifications for today.
Right, right, you know, I don't know.
That's planning board's problem.
Yep. Well, if, to go along with Kevin said, you know, in terms of benefit, it's a question of degree in the terms of profit afforded to the applicant.
Well, it's the benefit sought by the applicant is what they're looking at.
Because he's gonna make profit at eleven lots, he's gonna make a profit at thirteen lots, it's just a question of how much profit.
I think their argument is given the topography and the, the need, perhaps not the need, but the desire to have a through road, I mean, a loop road rather than cul-de-sacs. In order to get a reasonable return on their investment, they need this number of lots.
From my understanding is, they, they only want to have about four houses on a cul-de-sac. So, for the amount of houses, they, they're more or less obligated to have the loop. That was my understanding when I questioned that back.
Okay, but I think the applicant's argument is, if I have to design this subdivision in this fashion to get a reasonable return on, on my investment, I need this number of lots. And whether you, I mean, that's, that's the benefit they, they want to seek. I, I don't think that profitability is off-base. Whether there's a reasonable return is often what, what part of the relief is about. But you have to decide whether, on balance, that is a legitimate need, and how does it affect the character of the neighborhood.
Profitability was mentioned in the first meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, nothing wrong with profitability.
No. They said the project may be financially abus with the eleven lots. Extensive road infrastructure, they can't alter it. It would be a killer to lose three lots. The road cost seems to be a big, a big issue.
Yeah, but they said originally that the project will become infeasible at less than fourteen lots. Yet here we are at thirteen lots. So, you know, that, that necessarily didn't hold either.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
And we never did get any kind of numbers on, you know, even a rough guesstimate of what the road would cost versus the guesstimate of what the, a lot is worth.
Right.
I think the answer to number two is yes, that they can achieve it.
That it could be achieved. Well-
Without getting six variances.
Well, the question is the benefit sought by the applicant. So, the applicant is seeking thirteen lots. Can that be achieved by some method feasible other than the variance? Well, if, I think if you're dead-set on thirteen lots, you, you want thirteen lots, so, but-
I agree with that, it's based on interpretation of that question.
Right, right.
The way you're, the way you're phrasing it, you're right.
You know, what do we want to do with this?
I think, I think the answer is yes, I think they can achieve it some other way.
I think they could also, I just don't think that those ways have been explored.
Well, that's their problem was explored, not ours.
Right, but, but, no, but, I know, but, but I didn't see any, you know, I didn't see anything in any of the planning board minutes and, and discussions that there was an alternate plan that was rejected for whatever reason. This was the only plan that I saw. So, I think, I'm thinking, you know, personally, maybe they should, you know, when they bought this property and they found out that it needed all these variances, maybe they should have just scrapped what they had and re, redone it. But they didn't. So, now we're here with this, so what do we want to do? I, I agree with you, Kevin, I think it's possible, I think it's possible that they could-
It's possible for them to fix that.
I would vote yes also.
What do you think, Joe?
I'd say yes as well.
Gary, do you think?
As I said, it's based on the interpretation, how you're interpreting that. I, I know how the gentlemen are interpreting it, and I would agree with them if that's the interpretation. Maybe Mike can give us some guidance on that.
I think you can look at it either way. Either, either the objective they want to achieve is thirteen lots, in which case, obviously, you can't do that without variances. Or, what they are saying is that they cannot achieve a reasonable return on their investment unless they get three lots. But the other here, thing I'm hearing here is, no one has demonstrated that to you from a financial point of view on the one side, or that there's no possible way to make those lots fit without a variance. No alternative plan has been shown that demonstrates that. So, on either one, I think your discretion can go either way.
Because the lots in question are on the inside, it's almost like a horseshoe.
Yeah.
The lot's in question on the inside. They reconfigured the outside to satisfy whatever needs, and they had to sacrifice one lot. There's no reason why they can't do the same on the inside. That's my, that's my model, that's how I think.
I didn't look at it that way, but I'm, I'm leaning toward that now. Yeah, I mean, there, there's no reason they couldn't have looked at it. I mean, maybe they did, I don't know, but they didn't say they, you know, like, we have no evidence of that. All right, let's move on to number three. The request, is it a substantial area variance? Now, this is interesting. The requested variance is not substantial, the applicant says, especially when considering the totality of the circumstances. First, the subdivision meets all other bulk regulations, will comply with all stormwater regulations when given final approval. The variances are relative, relatively minimal, especially when you factor in that wells and leach fields will not be installed on the lots. The proposed development is completely consistent with the development in the surrounding area, and the existing slopes do not create any problems with the construction of the subdivision infrastructure or the homes on the lots, and the subdivision is well-planned. All right, now, I think this is where I'm having a big problem, because the applicant is saying, okay, we've got six lots that need variances, but each lot has minor variances.
But the whole project is a substantial-
And I'm, I'm looking at it as, okay, we have thirteen lots, six of them need variances, that's forty-six percent, that's, that's quite substantial. Now, the first meeting we had, they were gonna say in totality, and I said, wait a minute, you've got some lots that have like twenty-five, and then all of a sudden it switched, so, I don't know, can you have it both ways?
Well, I think it's appropriate for you to say, while each individual variance might not itself be substantial.
Right, but cumulatively, that's, that's basically what, you know-
I think you can find that way if you thought that's appropriate.
Does anybody have anything to say on that?
No, I agree with that.
I agree.
I just want to include that with the, the newer regulations, with the, the differences on the slopes and the wetlands and so forth, the whole idea was to, to make it better by having to add additional land to the lot to make up the difference for the slopes and so forth. The applicant has stated about, you know, trying to be in compliance with the MS4 things, but people up there say routinely floods. The applicant stated that the, that they're not allowed to send any more water off of there than is already coming off, but there is already a problem there, so they have to decrease the amount of water that's already coming off of there. There's a, where it is and the stuff around it, it's mighty hard to do that without, perhaps, increasing the lot size.
Well, also, if you look at the placement of the homes, they're, they're below the slopes, so where does water run? Downhill.
Well, the planning board has reaffirmed the negative declaration that was issued in the past, and they do have a stormwater pollution prevention plan reviewed by, or will actually, if it hasn't been already, reviewed by the town engineer. And yes, under the current DEC regulations, they cannot increase either the peak runoff flows or the, the, the net overall flow. So, I, I don't know that it's possible that if that plan doesn't pass muster before the planning board, that they'll lose a lot there, that wouldn't be a variance issue, but if it meets it, they're not gonna exceed drainage.
But I think that's why they reconfigured the outside and reduced one of the lots was to address those-
That issue.
The water issues.
Well, it certainly has to be addressed. I, I don't know that-
Well, there's wetlands involved, too, Kevin.
But you got in, you got the, you got the six lots on the inside of the road.
Yeah.
With all that water running down.
Mike, you bring up an excellent point, which is granting the possibility of thirteen doesn't guarantee that when the smoke clears, thirteen get built.
Yeah.
It doesn't guarantee, by no means does it guarantee.
All the variance-
No, and I, I want to make sure that Kevin, Kevin understands that. It does not.
All the variance means is as if the planning board were to look at the project with an individualized bulk table, that instead of the lot sizes or the net lot area computation being this, it's been amended by you. Now, if they find through their stormwater analysis that this number of lots and that amount of impervious surface cannot achieve the D, the objective of the DEC regulation requirement-
They could reduce.
They could reduce it, just because you granted a variance.
It can be reduced for a number of reasons, and that's, I think it's important for us to consider that, that just because we grant thirteen, doesn't mean that thirteen will pop up absolute.
Yeah, you're changing the bulk table applicable to this project.
Well, we would be granting them six variances, which I think is a lot.
I, I think it's actually more than six lots, but I think, don't some of the lots still require two variances, or they, it's down to six?
Well, yeah, some, right.
So, it's more than six.
Yeah. Because some are wetlands, some are slopes.
I, I think that's, I think we answered our-
But what I'm, I was saying, Mike, I mean, perhaps I'm, I'm missing a little bit here, but what, what I was saying is, if you go by the newer regulations, you would have less houses, you have less impervious surfaces. It seems that they've taken all that into consideration when they, they, they changed the, the thing back in 2011.
The planning board and the village engineer have either already done that, or will make sure that it complies by the end.
Yeah, you wouldn't think the planning board would send this map to us if they haven't already basically said, okay, you can do this with a variance.
Let me give you another example that's, that's not this project, to show you the, the different sphere of jurisdiction. Somebody wants to build an office building, the lot is small, they want a side yard variance. Happens to be that side is the only place they can place their driveway that goes to the rear of the building where the, the, the office workers and the, the customers of that building will park. And you see it as acceptable to reduce the side yard, and you grant them a variance. But when the planning board looks at the site plan application, they say, well, wait a second. You got a, a house next door, we need room to have landscaping so that the headlights aren't gonna shine into the dining room of that house, and you simply cannot build the building there, you're gonna have to move it back further. The fact that the variance was granted doesn't bind the planning board, it just changes the bulk table applicable to the project. The same thing here. Obviously, if they meet the stormwater regulations, the planning board is not likely to just make them reduce lots because they want them to, but the fact that you might grant a variance that would allow them to, doesn't require that the applicant be permitted to build them all.
Yeah, but the new one already takes that into consideration.
I just don't know whether they've completed that SWIP analysis yet. I assume they have, but I don't know that for sure. But they will, or they won't allow this number of lots. We're actually getting ahead to the next factor, which is, you know, environmental impacts. I think he was still talking about substantiality, although I think your conclusion was that although the individual variances might not standing alone be substantial, but some total, cumulative total is.
I think it would be substantial.
Yes.
You agree?
Agree with that?
Do you agree with that, Gary and Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Number four, the proposed, will it have, the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? And the applicant says no.
I'm, I'm gonna make the assumption on that, that as was stated before, that if there were environmental and/or technical adverse impacts that were obvious, we would have heard that from a technical expert by now. We would have heard that from somebody as, as testimony or a document. We don't have any such thing.
No, we have nothing. We have a, a negative declaration from-
And I don't really know what's gonna happen.
But it's an old one.
Is it gonna have a environmental effect on anything?
I, I don't think the, I don't think the zoning board can presume that it's detrimental, because we don't know. I think the, if we err, we err on the side of an applicant, saying if nobody has given us any documentation suggesting that this is detrimental, you have to conclude it's not, because we're not, we're not engineers, nor are we geologists.
I don't even know where the water goes past my house.
I was worried about the deer. Where are they gonna go? It's all woods now, where all those poor little animals gonna live.
So, I'd almost have to agree with them, because there's no information to say anything to the contrary.
True.
So-
Will it, so we're agreeing that there is no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions?
I just said contrary to that.
Same, same here.
You know, three, 310-1, section B goes for the maximum protection of residential areas, okay? And, again, you know, no more water runoff, but Mr. Flood from Van Buren talked about the, the difficulty with the water that's coming off there now.
Right, yeah, he did.
So, I mean, you know, it's, we can't guarantee that it's not gonna be a problem, you know what I mean? This is all well and good.
No, you certainly can't. But recognize that the planning board, who's the lead agency, has made a determination that there will be no adverse environmental impacts that flow from approval of the project.
So, we need to base our decision on that negative declaration?
Well, yours is not, yours is like a junior environmental impact that isn't secret, but it-
But there's no, there's no-
No evidence, proof, right.
There's people talking, there's this, but there's no engineer or anybody that came in here and told us that that's gonna be a problem.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, but you're siding on the side of the applicant.
Well, well, one way to do it might be to say that, that if, the planning, it's the planning board's charged to study the potential drainage impacts, and it's within their jurisdiction to reduce the number of lots, if an examination of the stormwater pollution prevention plan indicates that the stormwater flows cannot be, you know, safely, you know, contained on-site.
But the new zoning laws apply here.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It's almost like we're still dealing with the, the planning laws in, in 1996 or 95, instead of the more modern ones, which are supposed to take care of a lot more troubles.
Right. Well, they do apply, that's why they need a variance.
The problem is, stormwater is not our problem, it's their problem.
It's impact. It speaks to impact.
But we don't have no knowledge of any of it, so I can't assume there's gonna be, we can't assume there's gonna be water impact.
And the planning board's charge is to ensure that there will not be, because they're gonna approve the stormwater pollution prevention plan.
So, they'll take the plan back, and then they'll decide whether there's, and that's where Dennis Lindsay and-
So, this is what, so we're basically saying that there's a possible environmental impact. We don't know. We don't know.
We're, I'm saying that, Joe's saying that, and you guys are not.
Well, it is possible, but so is snow tomorrow.
No.
No, I mean, really.
No, I think that the language is, you, you can, you can be concerned about it, you can worry about it, you can make it a, you can make it an important criteria, but you can't say absolute that you know.
Correct, yes, right, there is no evidence.
You can suspect it, you can be concerned about it.
Right, yes.
There is no evidence saying that there's gonna be water problems.
Okay, no evidence that says they won't.
Exact, either way.
Right.
So, it's okay for us to vote different ways, because we're each taking a different side.
So, we can do that?
But we have to vote.
Do we?
Let me try to give you another example. Say that people are worried that, that there's a, that there's a straight road, and that people are gonna speed. I, I don't know that that's an environmental impact. The law is, you can't speed. The fact that people might isn't a reason to say, well, you can't have a straight road, won't give you a variance for a straight road, because people will speed.
Right.
The law says you cannot increase either the net peak runoff or the cumulative total runoff on your site. It's a DEC regulation, Woodbury's an MS4 community, it's charged with enforcement of that, and Dennis Lindsay will review that stormwater pollution prevention plan, and if it does not achieve that requirement, they'll have to either increase the size of a drainage base, reduce the number of lots, put in more rain gardens or something of the kind. But, and it, it may be that they'll have to reduce the number of lots, I'm not an engineer, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But it has to be achieved. They, they will not approve a subdivision where that plan does not achieve that result.
But for us, it's not a problem.
I have a problem with you're saying, there's a potential concern for drainage impacts, but the planning board will review the stormwater pollution prevention plan and ensure that the DEC requirements are met.
Does anyone have any other impacts that they're concerned about besides drainage? Joe?
Just, what law applies here?
The current law.
This is not grandfathered in-
No, it's not.
At 1996. I mean, that is very, very clear.
It must meet the current DEC regulations.
According to the present zoning law, as of 2011, this would not happen. If I bought that land in subdivision today...
Right. They're asking for a variance from the current zoning, because they can't do it. But they must comply with the DEC regulations for stormwater runoff.
I, I don't... I mean, I, I understand the points, and I don't disagree with it, but I'm just saying that if the changes are there, there has to be a reason for it. And less houses makes for better runoff situations for the MS4 stuff, so...
I don't think anyone has said to you, even if they went back to the 15 lots that were approved in 1995, that they couldn't meet the DEC regulations. I mean, that's just, there's no evidence either way.
Right, we don't know.
We just have to take the Planning Board for their due diligence. I, I don't even know how you wanna answer this. I mean, Joe's right, everybody's right.
Well, I'll note that, that there are concerns among members of the board that the drainage impacts from this project, you know, are of concern. And that the Planning Board will need to review the stormwater pollution prevention plan carefully to make sure it complies with the DEC regulations.
That's probably the most that we can do.
That's my suggestion.
Can we take a vote on it?
Sure.
Should we take a vote on it?
We can. Do you agree with that?
I, I think that we're just divided at this point, right?
I agree with that.
No, I think we agree. I think we disagree on the reasons. But we agree that there's a possible...
One thing is clear. It, a lot of this remains a gray area.
Right.
A lot of this is gray.
That's what we agree on.
If that's the question, then yes. We all agree, it's gray.
If it was black and white, you wouldn't need a zoning board.
That's where the world we live in is a gray area.
Oh, happy days.
All right, should we move on to number five?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this hardship self-created?
Yes.
It's, the applicant says, to the extent the need for the area variance was created by the change in the slope regulations made after the preliminary approval of the subdivision, the variance was not self-created. To any extent that the hardship was self-created, such factor alone shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance, which we know. I think it's self-created. They bought this property after the zoning change.
Without a doubt.
And whether, you know, they said, oh, well, it had preliminary approval. Well, it had preliminary approval for the prior zoning, and, you know, nobody was doing anything with it, so, right, I think that, absolutely.
Sounds like you might all agree this time.
That perspective would be consistent with decisions we've made in the past on similar...
Sure.
All right, so we have, no, the variance won't produce an undesirable change. Yes, they could do it some other way. Yes, it's substantial. There are possible...
That's yes and no, number four.
Yes and no, right. There's poss, there's, there's major concerns about the physical or environmental condition impacts, but no proof either way. And we said, yes, the hardship was self-created. So, we're going to need...
So it isn't a scorecard, but it's, those are the factors you use to evaluate whether you wanna do it.
Yeah.
I could prepare a decision that would grant the variance? And then you'd see if there were three affirmative votes to carry it at your next meeting?
I'm, I'm not in favor of preparing it in favor of...
Okay.
Of granting the variances.
I don't think I am either, based on our discussion and what I've learned.
See what the entire board says.
What do you think? I, I personally do not, I'm not in favor of granting the variance. Andrew, what do you think?
I'm not in favor of granting the variance.
Kevin? No? Gary? You want me to skip over you and go to Joe?
No, I, I, the, the thing that, the two aspects that I think the board should consider before an absolute, no, a denial, is that fear. Fear should not generate a no vote.
Fear?
Fear of what?
Fear's got nothing to do with it.
Fear of what?
Spiders?
Fear, fear of, of concern over not knowing enough that this won't be handled properly. I think the comments made before wherein that tolerating it, allowing...
I think that, that was for number four, I think that might...
Allowing the possibility for 13 would not preclude the Planning Board from doing their diligence, and I have every reason to believe that the Planning Board would do its diligence. And if the, if the town engineer feels that there are engineering-related issues here, he will not go forward with 13 as proposed by...
But that's not what we're asked to do. We're asked to make the decision whether we wanna grant six variances. I don't care the total number of lots. I don't care. Are we gonna give six variances?
I would, I would say this, Kevin. If you're, if, if you use substantiality as the witness test to turn it down, I would agree with you. If, if, if you say substantiality is what tipped the scales, I would agree that a no vote is in order.
Forget about your years on the Planning Board.
Well, you can't forget about it. It's not like that doesn't exist.
You gotta forget about your years on the Planning Board.
Those were some good times together.
We, we, we use all of our collective experience and such to determine what the right decision is. One of the things that concerns me here is that we are at risk of losing an Article 78 on this because of the fact that we don't have enough meat or teeth into this to turn it down.
Of course we do.
I, I think you should decide it as you feel is appropriate.
Don't, if you're worried about an Article 78, you really shouldn't be on the board. To be honest with you.
We should make...
No, if you're worried about an Article 78 every time you wanna make a vote...
No, make your decision based on, on the answers, the questions that we've answered, the, the discussions we've had, the evidence that the applicant has submitted.
All right, based upon your discussions, with your permission or at your direction, I'll prepare a disapproval decision, and you can review it at your next meeting.
So, Gary, the question goes back to you.
What are you gonna do, say yes or no?
Obstain?
I, I'm, I'm okay with, with Mike writing either approval or denial, whichever the rest of the members believe. That's fine with me.
All right, Joe, what do you think?
I voted deny.
Okay, so we have four that say...
I'll prepare the decision.
That they do not want to grant the variance.
I, I agree that Mike, Mike could prepare it either way. I'm, I'm fine with, with the preparation of denial, as I'm saying. I'm okay with that.
Or the direction for me to write the decision for you to vote on at next month's meeting.
Right. We're not voting. We're just voting whether to allow Mike to write it one way or the other.
Right, right, right. Okay. So, do I have a motion to adjourn? Is there anything else that anybody wants to say tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, meeting is adjourned, 8:30.